All right. Thank you for joining us for the Henry Ford College Board of Trustees meeting for May 17th, 2020. It is 7:03. We are on Zoom number 996-774-48094. Meeting is called to order. Roll call, please.
Trustee Sam Berry.
Here.
Trustee Patrick Deambrazio.
Here.
Trustee Roxanne McDonald.
Here, Dearborn, Michigan.
Trustee Adel Moses, here. Trustee Mary Petlicoff.
Here.
Trustee Irene Watts.
Here.
Chair James Thorpe.
Here. Before we go on to the next item, we are once again at the Ten Eyck and Dearborn Administrative Center, or Student, or Services Building, excuse me. We're not back on campus yet. We hope to get back soon. And while a lot has changed since our last meeting, including both the CDC and the state of Michigan saying that people that have been vaccinated no longer need to wear masks inside, we are still at an off-site location, and the Dearborn Schools is still asking people to wear masks. So out of courtesy to them, we will have our masks on when we're not speaking. Next item, please.
Approval of minutes. Approval of minutes for the Board of Trustees Financial Stability Ad hoc Committee meeting on April 7th, 2021, and the regular Henry Ford College Board of Trustees on April 19th, 2021. Recommended action: make any necessary corrections and move to approve these minutes.
Oh, moved.
I have a correction.
Oh, sorry.
Support. Okay.
So some, I wasn't.
Okay, we've.
It was moved and supported.
Right. Trustee Berry has moved it. Excuse me. Trustee Moses has supported it. And Trustee Petlicoff.
The correction is under the ad hoc special meeting. Molly Lookman is listed as being present, and I believe she was not at that first meeting.
Correct. You're correct. So we'll make that correction to be noted.
Any other changes that we needed to make? Can I have a roll call vote, please?
Trustee Berry.
Yes.
Trustee Deambrazio.
Yes.
Trustee McDonald.
Yes.
Trustee Moses. Yes. Trustee Petlicoff.
Yes.
Trustee Watts.
Yes.
Chair Thorpe.
Yes. Thank you. Next item, please.
Recognition and acknowledgements.
Thank you, President Cavallano, Chair Thorpe, and members of the board. My name is Asil Al Madallah. I am 2019 graduate of Fortson High School, and I am proud to say I am a 2021 graduate of Henry Ford College. I have just accepted a full athletic scholarship to continue my education at Gannon University in Erie, Pennsylvania, in the fall, where I will study business administration. This opportunity would not have been possible without the support of my wrestling coach, Grant McKenzie, who helped me earn All-American honors at the NGCAA Wrestling Championship in Council Bluffs, Iowa, last month. I represented HFC with nine of my teammates and finished sixth in the 125-pound weight class. I also finished my HFC career as the 2021 MCAA Champion and was voted the MCCAA Wrestler of the Year. Now, I am pleased to read this month's HFC Board acknowledgements. Congratulations to HFC student Donna Andrisk for qualifying to the NGCAA Golf Championships being held May 18 to May 21 at Swan Lake Resort in Plymouth, Indiana. Congratulations to the HFC softball team for capturing the MCCAA Eastern Conference Championship with a record of 23 and 5. This marks the first conference championship for the team since 1998. Congratulations to Cassandra Flucker, Student Activities Director. Ms. Flucker wrote an article titled "Hiring Facility of Color for Student Success", and it was published in Leadership Abstracts in the League for Innovation Community College website. Issues of leadership abstracts are public for the first two months, after which they are available only to those with an institutional or individual ice stream subscription. Wow, subscription. Congratulations to Rita Miza, Fortson High School student, who has completed 33 dual enrollment credits at HFC and has been awarded the prestigious Harry A. Sisson Scholarship from the Dearborn Rotary Foundation. Rita plans to study pre-med at either Harvard or the University of Michigan. The Pharmacy Technician Program received notification of recreditation from the American Society of Health System Pharmacists. Congratulations to Program Director Keith Bynum for all his hard work. Thank you for the opportunity to be this month's reader. Are there any questions I can answer for you?
Don't go anywhere. You are the first student from the college we've had in front of us in over a year. So there's going to be some questions.
Yeah, of course.
President Cavallano, you want to go first?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Chairman Asil. Congratulations. I'm really, really regretting I'm not able to shake your hand and give you a diploma. That would be something we would really enjoy. I hope you are able to enjoy the virtual graduation that will happen later this month, and I hope you cut a video to name all of your family members and friends and coaches who helped you. I have a couple of questions for you, and you're, the chairman is right. You're the first student we've seen in a long time, and I have to say that's one of the things we're most proud of, is students like you. And we're excited to interact with you, probably more excited than the board has ever been anytime. So I'm going to ask you some questions. They may seem like a little bit like a test, but it's because we're so proud of you and your accomplishments, and we want to learn more about you, at least I do. I know you're from Fortson, and I want you also to know that each person on this board is also responsible for the public school system in Dearborn. So because you're clearly a success story from Dearborn Public Schools and clearly an athletic success story with a full athletic scholarship to another institution where you'll receive your four-year degree, but we can't forget, and we need to know, where your start happened. So can you remember where you went to elementary school?
Oh, yeah. Henry Ford Elementary.
Okay. And how about middle school?
Middle School, Woodworth Middle School.
Okay. Now, these, some of these folks have been on this board for many, many years, and so this is a tough one. This is a tough one, but, and you can, you can use any of the schools, in the public, their public schools or your college experience, but you have to name two people who changed your trajectory that helped you in your education success, because I have to tell you, I mean, it is remarkable. It is remarkable that you're an All-American Wrestler, you're an MCCA, which is the Michigan Community College Athletic Association Champion, and Wrestler of the Year, and you were able to succeed in college all at the same time. So who, who made a difference in your life and why?
And you said it could be any school, any.
Any school, any teacher, maybe even someone who worked at the school, an administrator, a custodian, anyone that made a difference for you.
Okay. Probably for teacher, I'd say I had this really good freshman teacher. Coming through middle school, I didn't have the best grades. I didn't really take it seriously. My biology teacher, Ms. Cassam, she always like, she pushed me, you know? She, she's the one that signed me up for honors classes and like encouraged me. Like, I didn't take school too seriously. In high school, if you don't get a really good head start in your grades, because it came with a GPA, it'll mess you up through it all. So she helped me out through my high school, signed me up for honor classes my sophomore year, and she was my biology teacher, too. And I always hated science, but she always found a way to make science fun. So that's probably the first one. For second one, I'd have, I'd probably have to say, and you said it could be workers like coaches.
Anyone, anyone.
Yeah, it'd have to be probably my high school coaches. They were so supportive. They, they pushed me, you know? They, they were like the best like coaches I've ever had, like, and I've had a lot of coaches, and they, they just always had my back. And it wasn't just about wrestling, you know, and like life or anything. They always like motivated me to do better and be a better person.
I appreciate you saying that, and I, just for the board's benefit, I didn't give poor Asil a heads-up that I'd be asking him these questions on the fly, but I had an idea that he'd be able to perform under pressure. So Asil, a couple more questions, and then I promise I'll stop. You went to Henry Ford College after going through Dearborn Public Schools. How was that experience? What, 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 what did you, what did you think went well or not well at Henry Ford College as you came through Dearborn and went to Henry Ford?
The experience from Dearborn Public Schools to Henry Ford College, I loved the experience. I loved staying at home with my family. I loved that I didn't have to move away, and I could just stay home. It was very affordable, too. I didn't have to worry about going into debt. It was a great school, you know? I could get, finish my classes, and then when I was comfortable and ready to leave school for a four-year university, I would be ready. So it helped me get prepared, because a lot of people, they go straight to freshman year, and they still haven't really matured, and they're, they're not ready, and they, it ends up, they end up failing because of it. But me, that wasn't the case. I think it was great. I loved everything about it. Probably the only thing I didn't like was the parking.
And the lot's a lot better when you.
Yeah. I can appreciate that. And, you know, I, I regret that I didn't get a chance to see you wrestle, and I also regret that we didn't get a chance to interact while I was walking around campus, and because much of your time here was during the pandemic, and I congratulate you for getting through during that pandemic.
Thank you.
He's a poster child.
That's, that's exactly right.
For the, the things that make a community college not only economical, but a great transitional experience.
Yeah.
So the, I want to make, make mention of something that I'm really impressed by about you, and then ask you the big question all the adults are asking, now what? What are you going to do when you grow up? So get ready, that one's coming. But I'm going to say a good thing about you to give you time to think to the big question. It's not easy to speak in front of people, and you do it really well. And I, I have to tell you, as the president of this college, I'm really proud that you went to Henry Ford College, and I'm proud of the person you are and the man you're becoming. You can stand in front of people and represent our college in front of a bunch of people who are, you know, I have to tell you, as one of their employees, sometimes they're hard to make sure you get the, the speech correct. And you did a great job, and that's going to serve you really, really well as you move up into whatever you want to do. And you mentioned it might be something in, in business. So here's the big question. With all these skills you've accumulated here in Dearborn, have you thought about what you plan to do after you wrestle for two more years and, and gain a four-year degree?
I've given it a little thought, obviously, because a lot of people ask me the question. Really, right now, I'm trying to take it like one step at a time, but if I were have to do, I wanted a business, because business degree teaches me the skills to be a leader, to be a problem solver, which is, when I Googled, I was like Googling through the majors, and I enjoyed like, you know, the skills that you got from a business degree, so it's probably have to be something, a job where I could do all that stuff.
Yeah, well, I have to tell you, you're, you're on a great path forward, and we're proud of you. And I congratulate you from everyone on behalf of the college. And, Mr. Chairman, I'm, I'm sorry for the new board member, the, the only new board member, well, the two new board members. This is what we usually do with students. Poor President Cavallano takes a lot more time than the students really want. But I appreciate you being game, Asil, and, Mr. Chairman, I don't have any other questions.
Trustee Berry.
Yes. I know this board is very supportive of athletics and the arts, and this is the product. This is the end product. I know with, with Little League football, most of the athletic programs, we teach character, teamwork, confidence. That's a perfect example, which you're seeing right now. Asil, you recognize Mrs. Cassam. I can tell you, good choice, because eight out of 10 students would probably remember.
I think on honors night, she usually has quite a few.
Yeah, she needs help carrying out the flowers.
Yeah.
And you mentioned coaches at Fortson High School, but you didn't mention their names.
Oh, I'd say all of them. I know, I know Coach Berry, Sam Berry, your son actually was one of my coaches. He was a, a great guy.
Was that a setup?
So I'm going to take Trustee Petlicoff and Trustee McDonald down memory lane. I think it was 2012, we had this discussion before the meeting. It was 2012 or 2013 when we recruited Grant McKenzie. And Grant McKenzie is the grandson of the Grant McKenzie, who one of our buildings named after. And the discussion was that there's a lot of students that would probably come to Henry Ford College if they had the opportunity. Now, I'm, I'm assuming when you left high school, you didn't get any four-year institutions, which not.
No, not at all.
Boom. I don't know if you remember that, Roxanne, but that was a discussion we had that would give more opportunity for student athletes.
I'm curious.
The reason I mentioned some of your coaches, obviously Jeff Ball.
Oh, yeah, Jeff Ball.
Yeah, my son was one of them.
Yeah.
My son was one of the first athletes to go with Grant McKenzie.
Yeah.
Back in 2012. Very proud of you. I was watching, wasn't, wasn't live. I couldn't get to watch it live because I was very busy, but a lot of people were posting. You represented Dearborn and Henry Ford College. Very proud. Keep it up. Best wishes to you.
Trustee Watts.
So thank you for sharing your story and your journey, and I have a sense that we'll probably see you down the line, and I think beyond business school, I think you're going to do wonderful things, because I can just tell that you have quite a character.
Thank you.
And I think you're very ambitious. So I'm looking forward to see where you'll be in the next five to 10 years.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Trustee Moses.
Asil, congratulations once again. I'd like, just for you to always remember Dearborn and to give back. And since you're going out of state, hopefully you'll reconnect again with your middle school, with your elementary, also, of course, Fortson, to give back. So I expect that from you. So once again, congratulations.
Thank you.
I'll go kind of along with what Trustee Moses was saying, is that we need your help now, and it's being an ambassador for Henry Ford. Go back to the people that you know, whether it's family, friends, that are at Fortson or further down. Let them know the great things that it was able to do for you, the fact that you were able to get yourself to this level with not a lot of debt, if any debt. You're going to be a few steps ahead of others, but like I said, just be a great ambassador. Keep it up. We appreciate you for coming out here on this Monday night. Thank you.
Yep, thank you.
Next item, please.
President's items.
Thank you, Mr. Secretary, Mr. Chairman, trustees. I, that'll be a hard, hard thing to follow. You know, that's, that's why we're all here, and it's something that is a great point of pride for us. And it, it does show what you all have accomplished as leaders of this institution, and it is the pathway to success from kindergarten to a four-year institution through public education. And I know that each of you support that, and I just want to tell you all, when you get a chance, pat each other on the back, that, that is what the outcome can be. Now, some updates on the college, and I regret that I do have to start with a little bit of sobering news. I, our friend and our colleague, Dr. Pat Chapman, is mourning the loss of her father, Henry Alton Walker II, who passed away a little bit less than a week ago. I will be sending Dr. Chapman our condolences as a board and as an institution, and visiting with her and her family at the viewing for her father. And if you know Dr. Chapman, I have to imagine Mr. Walker was probably a pretty good dad. And I know from the loss of my father, it's a terrible, terrible time, and I want to tell you, Dr. Chapman, we're thinking about you and supporting you. Transition to news that you all heard, and frankly surprised some of us this weekend, when the Center for Disease Control made a change about what the recommendations were regarding masks generally, but also in, inside and outside places. We've received a lot of questions as leaders of the college about what that will do to our operations on the college. And what you saw from me at the end of last week was a statement to the entire college community noting that we, we have a system in place that will evaluate that, and it has served us well, primarily because it was a diverse set of stakeholders helping us decide the return to campus plan and phases. And while we're getting questions about what to do about whether we should still have a mask mandate, we, we are continuing our current procedure on that front, which is to say that when you are on campus, you, you will have a mask indoors. And we're evaluating whether that needs to change. And I would reference any questions from any of my colleagues and teammates at the college to look at our campus, return to campus plan, and my message from last week on that front. I give, I'll give one more small update, and then pause for any questions on those first several topics. The, the board is interested in, and I keep you all apprised of, our plans for the modality of the education delivery in the fall. And you'll recall that when the pandemic struck, we pretty quickly moved to a heavily, heavily, well, initially it was 100% face-to-face or nothing else. And then, as the summer of last year came along, we moved to a 90-10, with 10% being the face-to-face courses that the state government allowed us to do in select curricula. And we've been slowly moving that 10% of face-to-face courses, that percentage a little higher. And so in the fall, what we'll be planning on is 20% face-to-face. And that number has grown, week by week, as we see that enrollment is, is increasing in those face-to-face courses, and we have faculty and staff who are comfortable doing that. So I know many of you are interested in what will the face-to-face percentage be, and as of today, it's 20% for the fall. That doesn't mean that the rest is distance education. In fact, there's a hybrid. You all remember that we started some sections of courses that would have some face-to-face and some distance education. And for the fall, that's about 18% right now. And as we continue to move forward, we have a 62% allotment of full distance education for the fall, and that very likely won't grow. It may shrink. In other words, we may increase the number of courses that are offered, hybrid or face-to-face, depending, as always, on what is safe and what is legal. I'll pause there before I go on to any other. I have, let's see, one, two, three more topics, but for those first three topics, any questions from the board?
Trustee Moses.
Yeah. How do we see the interest for face-to-face? Is it the demand for the existing courses? What if those courses are not offered currently face-to-face? How would you know that students are interested in those classes?
That, the, the premise of your question at the beginning is accurate, that you, we, we attempt to track and see when those courses fill and then add sections. And I have to say, that was something that Dr. Nealan set up before my arrival, and he called it Strategic Enrollment Management.
Right.
And it, and it was a process whereby the college didn't just say, we're going to offer this many classes, boom, and fill them or not. Instead, the court, the colleges, the college offered a guess of how many courses, and then added courses as necessary with a, a precise idea of how many students were necessary in a course to justify the next section opening up. Now, that was before COVID-19, and it worked really, really well. It's worked pretty good with this, pretty well with this fall. But that's about the, the most precise mechanism we have, Trustee Moses, to test whether there's demand floating out there that would be there if there were more for face-to-face courses. And we, as a team, are continuing to try and figure out, can we, can we keep our finger on that pulse of if there is demand out there for face-to-face? One, do we have staff that feel comfortable doing that? And two, do we have space where we can deliver that course with the, with the current separation guidelines? And then, if we do open it, will that demand fill that course enough with those restrictions with staff and spacing? So I give you those, those elements to tell you that it's not as precise as pre-COVID, where we, we could, Dr. Nealan's team could really get strategic in when to add sections. But as evidence that we've, we've done that, I will say, just a month ago, we weren't at 20% face-to-face. We were below that, and we've increased it, looking at those metrics.
If I may add something, I have been sitting in on the core team, and they have really been monitoring that closely. And I want to give some kudos to Holly Diamond, and also, and every aspect, also facilities, they've been really keeping a close eye on those and have plans to adjust as needed. So kudos to the good work of the entire core team.
Trustee Petlicoff.
Yeah, I, I'm going to piggyback on, because I had that same, exact same question about how we understood. How are we ensuring that people, because I don't know what it looks like when they go in to register, that they know that they have that option of, of either/or kind of thing? I mean, are we giving them, even if we've already filled, so that they can sign up? And then what happens to those students if we only have two or three? What do we do with them?
So the first question is, the students are made abundantly aware of what the type of section delivery will be. And that, that predates COVID-19, because we did have a small percentage, but it was a percentage of our coursework that was delivered in an online format. Trustee Petlicoff, I do not know specifically whether if Mary Petlicoff signed up and really wanted a face-to-face course in biology and didn't see it, would there be a way for that specific student to, to build, build a justification for adding another section? I don't know that, and I'll, I'll find the answer out for you on that question. But I, I do feel confident that the, the team is adding face-to-face when, when necessary and able, because that percentage is, is continuing to go up. And they haven't given up on the, the limitations that Dr. Nealan's team put in pre-COVID, which were to say, we're not just going to add sections for two students. We, we have to build up a justification for that, that section before we offer it, which makes me, I, I will hazard a guess that that is the same process whereby we're deciding when to add face-to-face sections now, because that is frankly what we used before the pandemic to justify adding another section. In other words, there, there was a demand building before we added a section, where eventually Dr. Nealan's team saw, well, there's a sufficient demand for another section. Now we will add another section. But let me get a more precise answer for you. As to the student who is saying, I need this course, and I do not want to sit behind a computer. I want to sit in, in a classroom. And that's, that's what I believe happens, but I'll get you a precise answer.
And so then my next question, can we gauge what other area colleges are doing and offering at this time, and how much their percentage is, you know, face-to-face versus virtual?
Yeah, I've, I've specifically asked that question multiple times, and I'll, I'll tell you that most institutions are being pretty cagey about that.
So you can't just go on their website and have some kind of.
Well, you could, you could go painstakingly through, I'm sure, to go through any institution, including Henry Ford College, and attempt to enroll, and then build a spreadsheet. I'm sure you could do that. We have not done that for, looking at other colleges. In, in the cabinet members who interact with their analogues with other institutions, what I'm hearing is that institutions are, are saying they're going to be anywhere from 20 to 50% face-to-face. I haven't heard any report of more than 50% face-to-face.
Trustee Berry.
Yes, President Cavallano, I got real quick, got some positive feedback for you. Friday, I was at a local restaurant for breakfast, and one of the waitresses, I knew she was one of our students. She's one of our adult students. And I asked her, hey, how's it going? She says, pretty good. She is so excited for the fall. Two out of her three classes are in person, and she was just smiling from the ear to ear. So just FYI.
Well, I thank you for that, Trustee Berry. I, I will say, those students that you're hearing from are the students that are more vocal with me also. I'm still unclear whether that is scientifically supported, is, is to whether it's the majority of students.
Represented.
Yeah. And I, I have to be honest with you. If I were taking courses, I would want face-to-face also. And Trustee Petlicoff, one of the, one of the few good things about the pandemic in our operation is that my staff and my teammates watch you all give me questions, but they're at home, so they can send me messages, which was just happened.
So what's the answer?
The answer is that the, 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 the staff does monitor the waitlist per modality. In other words, per what the student wants, be it face-to-face, hybrid, or online. So it's not just a, a rough gauge of there are six students who want the biology course. No, it's there are six students who want the biology course face-to-face. And, and so that is a more precise way to gauge the demand. And I appreciate Dean Gilliland and Rhonda DeLong helping you with that question.
I've got a question that goes along with that. And again, I have not tried to register. It's been years since I had to register for any college course. Are there filters that students can go through where they can say that, I'm looking for classes that happen on certain days, or in this case, am I looking for virtual, or am I looking for in-person? Do we offer that type of filter for people?
I, I know that the students, when they get the question, or they, when they get the request for, I want a biology course, they will see when it is offered and how it is offered. And how it is offered is much more pivotal now than it was just a year and a half ago, because mostly it was all face-to-face. I don't know, however, Mr. Chairman, if they can check a box that says, like when you and I are reserving a flight or a hotel.
Right.
You know, don't show me any courses that are on Tuesday nights, because I've got to work those nights. But, you know, I, I tempted them to help me, so maybe I'll get an answer here in a few minutes.
Of course. Any additional questions before we move on?
Yeah, you were able to select online or, or in, in person.
You know, Trustee Moses is a really good resource in this, because he has a family member who is doing this, and, and we're proud of her graduating this term also. And I also did just get a response from my, my teammates who did say, yes, you can sort for the modality.
Great. All right, and continuing on.
All right. So the next segment is about the college budget, and you're going to be hearing from Mr. Setkowski on a initial presentation of proposed budget for the next fiscal year. Of course, we all recall that our fiscal year. Of course, we all recall that our fiscal year liked the school district's startings on July 1, which puts us at a disadvantage because, and I shouldn't say disadvantage. Every higher ed institution is at a disadvantage because the state government issues its budget on October 1. And they have historically waited until the very last second to issue it. So we, you, as a board, have to usually decide a budget several months ahead of knowing what a significant portion of your funding will be. And I want to give you an update on what that is. So the, the community college budget is something that we watch very closely in the legislature. And as is the case every year, the governor proposes a budget. And the governor this year proposed for the coming year to have a two percent increase in the operating budget for community colleges. And recall, for general purposes, twenty-five percent of our revenue comes from the state, in state allocations. And so a two percent increase would be, would be good. In fact, this college and most colleges went through many, many years of flat or no increases. So, and of course, this governor ran on the idea that more funds should flow to the community college world. And she's made good in her proposals, one by increasing the general funding, but also launching two free college programs that help students make access to community colleges like we just saw Aseel mention. So the governor proposed a two percent increase. And of course, as, as we progress, then the House and the Senate have their committees that evaluate that. And just last week, those two bodies of the Michigan Legislature issued their budgets and had votes on them. The Michigan Senate voted to, yes, agree that a two percent increase to the state funding for community colleges is what they agreed to. They also agreed to send funding to Michigan Reconnect, which is the program for citizens in Michigan with age twenty-five and no college credential. It's a program that I've supported very, very strongly, and I do believe it's a great method to move Michigan, and frankly, the southeast Michigan area into a better place with how many of our citizens have a college credential. So we've been fighting to keep that funding going for that program. And recall that that program is brand new, and it was funded for the first year, which will end soon. And we're hoping to see funding come through for that. Of course, the governor recommended funding for that, the Senate recommended funding for that. So we turned our eyes to the, to the Michigan House of Representatives. And some very, very surprising developments came from the House. First, that they recommended a six-point-seven percent increase to community college funding. And that was a surprise and a welcome surprise and a very dramatic change in how they would distribute that money across community colleges. Most everyone was surprised by that, and that's still to be worked out. But, but they did not, in other words, did not add funding for Michigan Reconnect, no funding for that. So that was a bit of a surprise, and we're still seeing where that will shake out. The last thing that was of interest to the board was this idea that tuition restraint was potentially coming down the pike for us. And you'll recall that the governor's proposal did include tuition restraint, which said, if you're going to take part in state monies, particularly Michigan Reconnect, you shall not raise your tuition this year by X amount, and that amount was four-point-two percent. And the Senate, when it came back and said, yes, we think community colleges should have increased funding by two percent, it also included a tuition restraint at four-point-two percent. The House, as I mentioned, said, well, we want to increase funding by six-point-seven percent to Michigan community colleges. We do not want to fund Michigan Reconnect, and I shouldn't say that they didn't say that, it just wasn't there. So that's the, the message to be taken. But they also did not include a tuition restraint method. So of the three irons in the fire on this question, you have the governor who says, increase funding to Michigan community colleges, fund Michigan Reconnect, and you shouldn't increase tuition by more than four-point-two percent. The Michigan Senate essentially agreed with those three tenants. The Michigan House of Representatives didn't agree with any of those. Said, we want to increase by more than two percent. We don't want to fund Michigan Reconnect, and we don't think, we're not going to include tuition restraint. Where this goes next is, at the end of this week, the, the state government does what's called a revenue estimating conference, where nonpartisan groups of actuarial and auditory individuals look at the revenues that the state has received from its revenue streams and then tells the legislature and the executive branch, here's how much money we think you'll bring in as a state for the next year. Build your budget on this. Of course, the legislature and the governor is not required to follow that, but they do. I will say that they take that revenue estimating conference seriously. Once that comes out on Thursday, then the rest of the legislature will have to sit together and reconcile what the governor has suggested, what the House has suggested, and what the Senate has suggested. Again, the, the disadvantage we're at is that that answer is not due until the end of September. Yet our budget is due beginning of July. So that is an update for you on some of the moving pieces in Lansing. I'll shift now to say that Mr. Setkowski is here today to present to you, and I've given you copies, paper copies of his PowerPoint presentation of a proposal. And that is, all it is, is a mere proposal for the budget for the new fiscal year, which begins July 1. And he'll be ready to answer your questions about that. It has assumptions in it, and those are only assumptions, of course, because the board retains authority to say what the budget is. But I know one assumption that I want to clearly outline for you that is merely just an assumption, and that is tuition, which is on your agenda today. And when Mr. Setkowski makes a presentation today to you all, it will include the assumption of a tuition increase of four-point-two percent. But of course, that and any other assumption on that presentation is for you all to decide. But historically, and I would suggest very strongly to you, the best way to run this institution is for us to prepare a budget for you so that you can vote on it at least by the June board meeting, which is next month, so that we can start the budget in July. Mr. Setkowski and I would prefer to do these things sooner in, in the year, maybe March or April. But it, it just didn't seem feasible with what ramifications we were seeing from Lansing and from the federal dollars that were flowing. So Mr. Setkowski will be ready for that when it comes to your presentation, or to, to his presentation in your agenda, which is after me. Last thing I'll say, and then I'll stop because I'll be done and I'll take any questions, is I, I just want to say, you know, athletics is, is, is an important part of our institution, but it has felt like a breath of fresh air recently. It's, it's kind of this idea that we can still get together and enjoy some part of being together. And as I mentioned to you, our men's basketball team was in the national tournament down in Danville, Illinois. And I, I did go down and, and watch their first game where they were a thirteen seed, playing, I believe, a four seed. And, you know, I'll tell you, they, they played great and they, they knocked that team off, and so they were the spoiler. They continued to play in that tournament and they had two tough losses thereafter. But I was excited to watch them and I, you know, their, the coach is, is a, is a young man who used to be an assistant coach at Macomb Community College. And he's got away with these young people who, he instills in them kind of the things we saw with Aseel, that, you know, the, the teamwork and, and, and support of each other, mixed with education. And he's, he's been noticed by others for that purpose. That his teams stay eligible, and that's not easy. College athletes sometimes struggle with eligibility. His teams stay eligible. His teams won. They won the league this year. And now for the third time in his time here, he's been voted by his peers as the coach of the year in the league, which is, which is a nice thing to see. Finally, I'll just say, I was also really excited and happy to see that our softball team was playing our across-town rival, the Oakland Community College, for a chance to go to the national finals. And that was a three-game series this afternoon, and our team had been really whipping the competition. So I said, I got to go and see that some of that game, and I showed up this afternoon. They, as you know, we, many years ago, decided to remove some of our facilities. So we play at a, a community field in Taylor. And I showed up and I knew this team was winning, and sure enough, I showed up and they lost one to zero. Now, it's a three, it's a three-game series, so they had two more games left, and I thought, I better leave. And sure enough, the second game, they won eleven to one. And so, you know, they had to go to game three, and I just, I just got a message from our athletic director, Rochelle Taylor, who reported that. Unfortunately, they did lose the third game to Oakland Community College, but I enjoyed being out there. I saw a lot of, I met a lot of the players, a lot of the families that support these players. And a dad from central Ohio talking about how his daughter and, and her experience at HFC, despite being during a pandemic, has been fantastic. And so I can report to you that there's, there, there's light at the end of the tunnel. I really do feel like we're, we're making progress in what we all have invested in, and that is changing lives through education. And I'll keep bringing you some of those stories as we go. And that is all I have, and I'll take any questions, Mr. Chairman.
Any additional questions for the president before we move on? Thank you very much for your updates.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Next item, please.
Discussion items, proposed fiscal year 2021, 2022, budget and board report forty-five ninety-three, Vice President Setkowski.
Thank you. Thank you, Chairman. Thank you, Board of Trustees. I am going to just do a lead-in here on our recommendations for 2022, and then I'm going to ask Brian Bame, Budget Extraordinaire, to take us through the, the presentation on, on the 2022 recommendations. Just for your purposes, I'll, I'll look at the first, go through the first, first slide, and that deals with comparison of fiscal year 2021, the initial budget that was passed last year and approved in June. Eighty-five million in revenue, eighty-five million in expenses, a break-even budget of, of revenue at that, at that time. Then you approved in January a adjustment to the 2021 budget, which included our final numbers on, on state appropriations, which turned out to be much better than anticipated. Enrollment was slightly up for the, for the fall and spring, winter was, was down, but an overall better situation slightly than what we had anticipated. And then expenses were, were increased as well. So we had a, a budget adjustment of a hundred and fifty-three thousand dollars surplus. And that is, that is faring well, and we are doing better than that, that right now, as you saw in the, a report that was put in your packet by the, by the president for, through March thirty-first. The budget for 2022, which we are going to be proposing, is a little over ninety-one million in revenue, a little bit over ninety million in expenses, and has a calculated surplus of a little over eight-hundred thousand dollars. And with that, that lead-in, I will turn it over to Brian to go through the, the details in the sections of revenue, expenses, capital requests, capital planning, and where we are headed, recommended headed for this coming fiscal year. So Brian.
Thank you, John.
Take care.
Thank you, John. Do we, do we have the presentation or do I need to share my screen?
We've got copies in front of us.
Okay. All right, if, if we're, if we're not reflecting it anywhere, I'll just go off my.
Brian, if you could share your screen for those on the Zoom call.
Okay, that's fine. John walked you through this, this particular slide. And I, I, one thing that I'd like to, I'd like us to go back a year. And in order to see where we're at for fiscal twenty-two, I think it would be helpful to spend a minute to talk about fiscal twenty-one. Because the best way to reflect our initial budget last year, what is to envision yourself driving in a whiteout. Because there, we didn't have very much information. The country was shut down. We had huge unemployment numbers. And we had no idea what some of the big issues would be, including state aid, property taxes, what would property values be like? As well as, we were also at the same time negotiating with sixteen fifty, and what would that contract look like? So it's helpful to, to know that when we're looking at, showing you differences from FY twenty-one initial budget to the FY twenty-two proposed budget, there's some pretty big changes in there. So let me go to the revenue side of the changes. There's a small change in bad debts. The, the next two lines reflect the changes in state appropriations. The second one is from the mid-year, when we got the realization that we weren't going to take basically a twenty percent cut. And the two-hundred-and-thirty-four thousand is really our increase for next year. The same with property taxes. We had two, two line, I've got two line items here. One was the mid-year adjustment, which was seven fifty, and then another five fifty going to next year. We have, we've exceeded what we, what we expected even after our adjustment this year. And so we were looking at that continuing into next year. We also had other revenue decreases, mostly due to reduction in interest rates and things like that. Our enrollment decrease and, and change in mix. Last year, we had estimated being down five and a half percent, and we ended up being down a little bit closer to seven overall for the year. So that's, that's that reduction. For next year, we're looking at a zero percent change in enrollment, so basically being flat. And the next item, the summer semester modification, that's really just a tiny difference that we had. That's a reduction going forward into next year. It was a one-time issue as it relates to this current fiscal twenty-one year. And then finally, we've got a tuition increase of about one-point-six million dollars. And the one thing that I point out there is that we, with the twenty-five dollar tuition assistance that we're looking to have for both fall and winter, that's going to be a reduction of about five million dollars. And then the expenditure side, again, we have some things that were reflected both in, in the mid-year as well as for the, for the year in total. We've got one-point-four million dollars of contractual increases. We've got about a half-a-million-dollar reduction in adjuncts. And that's, that really reflects the fact that we're, more of our instructional teaching is being done by full-time instructors as opposed to adjuncts. In terms of retirements and, excuse me, then there's a fringe benefit adjustment. And that reflects both the, the changes in the payroll and some, the benefits related to reinstatement of some positions. Then retirements and replacements, that is kind of the netting of mostly on the faculty side. We have a net, a net increase of about five faculty members from where we adjusted in the middle of this year. That's reflected there. And then we've got two items for positions reinstated. When we did the twenty-one budget, in order to get to zero, we, we did, for, for most open positions, we just removed them from the budget. And when we had our revenue reinstated, we reinstated most of those positions. And then we reinstated a, a couple more to next year, and that's the hundred-and-forty-seven. The one-point-two is something that we put in, in the mid-year. And then non-payroll budget reductions that were reinstated, three-hundred-and-ten, two-hundred of which were put back in mid-year. And then we've got an increase in mandatory transfers of a million dollars. And then also, that's again, two line, two line items, seven-hundred thousand that were put back in mid-year. And then a few, some increase in utilities, data processing and other increases. Our total expenditure increases five, about five-point-four million dollars. In terms of our initiatives, a, a number of these Um, in terms of our initiatives, a number of these items are carryovers from from the prior year. Although we did increase, um, we had just a chemistry lab that was on the the docket, but we also added, um, some additional chemistry labs and, uh, biology labs for renovations. We've got, uh, the rekey, some security updates. The the liberal arts building railing, and then the M-Tech Trade School. As far as classroom-related items, and then we've got, uh, marketing clients and student success retention, uh, going forward as well. The next, uh, slide deals with our, uh, history of, um, unrestricted general fund balances, and that's in the blue, and our all-funds balance, which is in the red. Over the year, starting in fiscal thirteen and going through estimated, uh, fiscal twenty-two. And you can see the growth, um, in the unrestricted, really both, both, um, sections. So that now, uh, at the end of this fiscal year twenty twenty-one, we're estimating our unrestricted general fund balance at thirteen point nine, and our all-funds unrestricted at twenty-two point seven million dollars. And then, oops. Hopefully you could see the bottom of this particular slide. But this is just reflects, uh, the state appropriation, the property tax, and the tuition and fees per, uh, full-year equivalent student for, uh, FY twenty twenty. And on the far left is the statewide amount, and on the far right is HFC. And as you can see, um, we have, uh, the the biggest issue for us is our property tax as a percentage, or as a as a number per full, full-time equivalent student is significantly less than the statewide average than some of our peers. We are about the the same in terms of our tuition and fee as the state as a whole. And, uh, we're under, uh, the state average in terms of the state appropriations. And finally, this is just a recap of, uh, the earlier slide. And with that, I guess I will, uh, open it up to, uh, questions.
Any questions for either Mr. Bain or Mr. Sutkowski? Trustee Patlitschkov.
Yeah, on, um, slide five, with the carryover initiatives, there aren't any value to that. Is that their reason for that? I mean, I understand that.
They were already funded. Those those projects have already been funded, uh, in prior prior years. We held off on them during twenty twenty-one to, uh, to start on them primarily because of, uh, construction issues, uh, and the fact that chemistry and biology initially were, uh, weren't allowed to be hybrid or face-to-face. But now that, uh, construction is is taking place and people are back, uh, doing that kind of work, we haven't re-initiated all of those, all of those projects. The liberal arts building rail has been talked about ever since, uh, um, Mr. Silvestri retired, and that has been, uh, the monies for that have been allocated, but have not been spent at this point. So we can give you an estimate, I can get you an estimate for for those, but those are all fully funded.
Yeah, the reason I ask is because I, um, you're hearing reports now that, um, construction costs have skyrocketed.
Oh, yes, yeah.
And so I'm wondering, while these, uh, were fully funded, but I do they remain fully funded? Or are we anticipating that those costs are going to be different now? Because we held off on them and are now going to start it, and all of these things are seeing a a a leap in construction price.
We probably would see some in the chemistry, the biology lab renovations, but the, uh, the rekeying process is is a multi-year project, uh, going going forward. We don't see much change in that. Security updates with cameras, again, that's, uh, a lot of that has been procured and and, uh, and identify the liberal arts building railing. We did not do a lot of work on that because we've changed directions on that a couple of times. What do we do? How do we go in and do it right? How do we, uh, really make sure the weatherproofing and the the water doesn't, uh, leak into that building? It was studied correctly a number of years back, so we, even before pandemic came into account, we were pushing back on that to make sure it was being done, uh, correctly. So that could be, uh, that could be more than what we had anticipated, but we did put a significant amount of monies in there. I'm guessing, strictly guess at this point, it was around four hundred thousand dollars to deal with, uh, the weatherproofing of of that project. And initially, we looked at two hundred to two-ten, but then we started looking at more elaborate work in that area of the price. We we put, uh, an increase in price in that. Marketing and compliance, uh, again, we, there is money in the budget that, uh, was put there two years ago, to about two hundred thousand dollars. It still stays there and has not been been changed. And, uh, student success and and retention, uh, it's really, um, some issues, some things that we've looked at this year that the board, that the cabinet has looked at and have strategically looked at at those areas with Holly now being part of the cabinet, and with, uh, Rhonda working on that, that has been taking hold and moving forward. So the only question, uh, trustee, with regards to construction possibilities on here, is the chemistry and biology labs. But again, a lot of that is equipment is is what it is. So the, you know, the, you know, the, um, some of those, some of the, uh, work in that would not be, uh, you know, how do I say it? Metal studs, two-by-fours, things, things of that nature that, uh, that have really taken a big increase over the over the last four months.
Okay, thank you.
Trustee Mosip.
Yeah, can you explain the, um, mandatory transfers? What are those? And second question about utilities, shouldn't we see a decrease here since some of?
We did take a decrease, and we did take a, yeah, okay, we'll do that. We did take a decrease, we did increase utility slightly because we have been ratcheting that down for this particular year because of, um, as I said, occupancy. So we have not, uh, seen, uh, we've seen, uh, the the decrease in the utilities, uh, over the last year. We did put a slight increase in there because of moving more toward face-to-face than what we had for the entire last year. But it's a, how do you say, it's a net figure. It's didn't go up as much as we had have anticipated because of the work that is being done on the IEMP project. A great majority of that will be completed and done by the middle of this fiscal year, sometime in March and April of of next year, when savings really starts starts taking off. So it's, it's a balancing act is what is what it is. It could have gone up more if this project had not been, uh, undertaken. But there is some, I'd say, just a little buffer there to give us, uh, some some flexibility and and some some movement. Regarding the transfers, uh, the transfers from mid-year, if you recall, in twenty twenty-one, we did not have there, it's not a full eight hundred thousand dollars, but we did increase and put back the transfer from the property tax fund to the plant fund for, uh, the, uh, the tech building and the IEMP as part of the approval for the, uh, property tax five-year renewal. We said we were going to put eight hundred thousand dollars in there each year. We held it out at the beginning of last year, and we put that in at mid-year, uh, for for this year. Also, what you're seeing then for next year is that that eight hundred thousand will continue on. A million dollars in mandatory transfers, uh, dealing, dealing with bonding, uh, if you will. We did out, take out the bond for the IEMP project that helped me, Brian, thirteen and a half million. Does that sound about about right?
Something.
So we're going to be starting, start making payments, uh, on that bond, so it's a transfer, uh, to that, uh, to the fund for the payments on that bond, as well as, uh, uh, refinancing that we did on one of the other bonds. So that's explained as a transfer from the general fund to the bond fund, to the plant fund, dealing with, uh, uh, the commitments to, uh, the capital projects.
Additional questions? One question that I'd bring up, and it was spoken to a little bit. So when we started the twenty twenty-one budget, it was based on the assumption of COVID, and we didn't really know what was going to happen, so we were dropping numbers. We assumed less income, less expenses. And then we see a big bump now for twenty-two on both of those items. It, so if we went back to twenty twenty, how would these numbers from twenty-two compared to twenty? Would they be more in line, not having these five, six million dollar differences?
They would be more in line with mid-year twenty twenty-one. This is what they would have been, the middle column on the first document that that we went through. Because we did cut, you know, over four point six million dollars out of twenty twenty, when we built twenty twenty-one for state appropriations, because we just did not know what the governor and the legislature were going to do. If you will recall, they did cut us ten percent in twenty twenty, uh, for state appropriations and made it up with CARES money from from the state. Well, that didn't help us a lot because it still limited us in our general fund by that ten percent. You couldn't use it for, uh, general operations. You couldn't bank it. You couldn't build up reserves with that CARES money. You had to spend that CARES money on specific issues and and items that, you know, uh, that, uh, you hadn't anticipated. One thing we did do with that was when the faculty did work one additional week last year. We took that fund out of, uh, we took the funding from, uh, the CARES state money and used that to offset that, uh, that ex, that extra week for the adjuncts and for the full-time faculty members. So, yes, it, uh, it was twenty-one, what initially was significantly down, and four and a half million of it is directly related to the state appropriation. So the twenty twenty-one mid-year that was approved back in January brought us back toward where we were in twenty twenty.
Thank you.
Chair Chair Thorpe, uh, let me, let me just add one additional comment, because I
Yes.
I look back, I look back to the, uh, I can cheat here. Uh, I look back to the, uh, twenty twenty-one, um, budget presentation. And our mid-year, uh, budget for twenty twenty, so it was the the January adjusted budget was, I'd say, pretty close to this year. So it was at ninety-one point four million in revenue and ninety point six, um, in expenses.
Okay, thank you very much.
That's why I have him. I I was doing off the top of my head. He had, he knew where to find the numbers while I was talking, so thank you, Brian.
All right, thank you very much for the presentation. Next item, please.
Next item is citizen participation. Uh, any member of the public who wishes to submit a written request to provide a public statement during the public comment portion of the board meeting will provide the electronic request to Adel Mosip, M-A-A-D-E-L, at hfcc.edu by seven ten P.M. On May seventeenth, twenty twenty-one, the public comment emails will be read by a designated board member, so the comment might be heard by those electronically attending the meeting. The board rules for the content and length of the public statements remains as of the meeting, obviously, is is still in person. I do not have any public comments that were sent to me even until now, so.
Okay, next item, please.
A special consideration of an item, are there any action items on this agenda which board members or the president wish to discuss and vote on separately? If there are, we will exclude these from the action below.
Trustee Barry.
Number four, please.
Number four, okay. And we will also need to vote separately on number five, I believe. You will need a roll call for that. Any others? All right, trustee Mosip, if you can.
So move to approve action items one through five as recommended in this agenda, except for three and for four and five.
So moved.
One second.
Motion was made by trustee Barry, supported by trustee D'Ambrosio. Uh, let's start with number four.
No, this is only one through
One through three.
One through three.
Sorry, 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 sorry. So we'll vote on i- items one through three first, and then we'll move on to the next two. Sorry about that. Can I have a roll call vote, please?
Trustee Barry.
Yes.
Trustee D'Ambrosio.
Yes.
Trustee McDonald.
Yes.
Trustee Mosip, yes. Trustee Petlicov.
Yes.
Trustee Watts.
Yes.
Chair Thorpe.
Yes.
Okay, so, uh, item number four. Recommended action, move to approve the following. Four point two percent increase in tuition for the fiscal year twenty twenty-two, with the increase effective with the fall twenty twenty-one semester in district tuition from one oh one fifty to one oh five seventy-five per credit hour out of district tuition from hundred and seventy-seven dollars to a hundred and eighty-four dollars and fifty cents per credit hour in out-of-state and international tuition from two hundred fifty-seven to two hundred sixty-seven dollars and fifty cents per credit hour. I'll move that.
I'll support it.
All right, the motion was made by trustee Mosip and supported by trustee Patlitschkov. We'd like to start with discussion. Trustee Barry.
I I'm not going to waste any time tonight. I put up my argument against, uh, the last meeting. I just, I did speak to a couple of my colleagues on this item. I fully understand why we want to do this, but myself, uh, we are spending money into marketing. Uh, our enrollment is still not where we want it to be. And I don't think, uh, I mean, if you're looking to increase enrollment, that's not what you want to do, is raise tuition. Another problem I have with this is the pandemic. Raising tuition during a pandemic, I had a problem with that. I just, those are just comments, not questions, so. That's all I wanted to say.
Thank you. Any other discussion?
I also raised this concern last meeting as far as making a huge jump in tuition increases. Um, and we want to move toward making those increases only in line with the inflation rate. I I would like to, as I said last meeting, would like to explore other avenues. For example, even bringing money from the unrestricted funds to cover, um, these holes. Uh, but I'm I'm very optimistic if the federal government will come in and uncover tuition for our students, for community college, making it free tuition. That will put us in a good, uh, standing, but it's still a calculated risk and unknown for the future.
Any other discussion? I would follow up with what's been mentioned. And the one thing trustee Mosip that you said that that I always smile about is when they say free, wish, like free school. We all know it's not free. It's it's tax money that we're all paying. We're in uncharted territory with with having a cap. This is something that that universities have dealt with. We just haven't had to really deal with it. And we don't know how this is going to play out. So, uh, we're we're hoping for the best and doing what we believe is in the best interest of the the school. And we hope it doesn't have to become an annual event, um, but only time will tell on that. So if we could move ahead then with a roll call vote on this item.
Sure, uh, trustee Barry.
No.
Trustee D'Ambrosio.
Yes.
Trustee McDonald.
Yes.
Trustee Mosip, no. Trustee Petlicov.
Yes.
Trustee Watts.
Yes.
Chair Thorpe.
Yes. All right, the motion carries.
Uh, item number five. Move that. Move that the Board of Education designates blank as its representative and as an alternative. In the event the designated representative is unable to attend and is further directed to cast a vote on behalf of the board for candidates, blank and blank. I don't think we do have, do we have the names for those?
There is only one person running for the position for the Wayne County Risa.
Jim Petrie.
Jim Petrie, who is a former Dearborn Public Schools employee.
Worked at Fortson.
So we would. Go on.
That meeting is also set the same time or an hour earlier than one of our board meetings. So I don't see that, since there's only one person, I will still have to have a represent, representative, but I don't see where we'll have somebody be able to attend, especially with only one person on this slate.
Good point. Yeah, we can move forward with designated, designating our representatives, but we might not be able to attend because.
It is an in-person meeting as well. It's not virtual.
Okay. So who would like to volunteer then as our designate?
Those are attends.
That will not attend, yeah.
We're filling in the blanks here.
I will volunteer.
All right.
It can be alternate.
All right, so we would have trustee, excuse me, trustee McDonald as our designate and trustee Barry as our alternate, looking to cast our vote in favor of James Petrie.
Some move. Support.
Okay, there was like echoes pretty much going on here. So let's go with trustee Petlicov making the motion and trustee McDonald supporting.
Trustee Barry.
Yes.
Trustee D'Ambrosio.
Yes.
Trustee McDonald.
Yes.
Trustee Moses, yes. Trustee Petlicov.
Yes.
Trustee Watts.
Yes.
Chair Thorpe.
Yes. Motion carries. Yes.
If I can add, when that is, that resolution is sent to Wayne Risa, if we could also just let them know that that is the time of our board meeting, so our representatives will not be there.
We will pass that information along to Dr. Malenko.
Thank you.
Next item.
Board of Trustees' Business Acknowledgement of Correspondence.
Anyone have any correspondence since our last meeting? Doesn't look like it. Next item.
Board Committee Reports. One.
Trustee Moses.
Just for the Ad Hoc Financial Stability Committee, we had a meeting on April seventh, twenty twenty-one. And it was more of an introductory meeting as well as ask for information meeting. And we have our next meeting this Wednesday at seven P M. And all of the information has been sent out to the committee members, so looking forward to that.
Great, thank you for help with that.
Is that a Zoom meeting?
It is a virtual meeting.
All right, any other committee reports? Next item.
Request for information and/or future agenda items.
What I would ask for, because I'm not seeing any others, President Cavallone would be, you mentioned the Return to Campus Plan. It's been a while since that's been presented to us. If you can give us a refresher on that at our, possibly at our next meeting and kind of where we're standing with everything. It was a good conversation earlier with you and President, I'm sorry, trustee McDonald, giving us some updates on it. If we can get some more info again.
Yes. I'll work with trustee McDonald to devise a plan for who will present to you all, but I'll plan on that as a board report and a presentation for your June meeting.
Thanks. Was there going to be any other requests for information or agenda items? Okay, next item.
Board Member Commentary.
President Cavallone, did you want to go over items here?
Yeah, thank you trustees for supporting our proposal to have new colleagues join us here at the college. I just want to take time to say hello and welcome to some of my new teammates as a result of your vote, who I believe are in attendance virtually. And, you know, I, I have to say, a SEAL's presence here with us today makes me hope and feel confident that soon we'll be in a place back on our campus where you'll be able to see the faces of our new teammates when we do this part of the Board of Trustees' meetings. But until we can do that, we'll have to just assume they're on the other side of that screen. And, and, and I want you to imagine Ebony Gill, who will be one of our new teammates as a department secretary in the academic advising area. I also want to welcome and introduce you to our new physics full-time instructor, Jeremy Adelman, our new nursing instructor, Ashley Barnes, another new nursing instructor, Kristy Buck, and the other, or a new pre-education instructor, Carolyn Casale, a new instructor in our respiratory therapy curriculum, Tina Culhane, who is also a proud graduate of our program there and shares a country of residence with your superintendent, Dr. Malenko, in that other country across the river. And a new instructor in the humanities by the name of Kathleen Jazinski, a new physics instructor, Jesse Mason, a new English instructor, Summer Sterud, and a new accounting instructor, Victoria Swin Sicky. And to all my new teammates, I, I'm grateful you've chosen to spend your professional acumen and teaching abilities with our students. I hope you're able to see a SEAL and many students like him. You'll be making a difference in our community and we're, we're proud to have you onboard. And I, I offer to you what I offer to all of our teammates here. I have two email addresses. I monitor them both. If you have a need and you think that I can help you, please reach out. I will try to find an answer for you. I will commit to being truthful to you and supporting you. And I, if I can help you, I absolutely will, as will anyone at this institution. Last thing I'll say, Mr. Chairman, if I may, I appreciate the board's decision vis-à-vis tuition. And I would just note that very soon we will be reporting to students the tuition assistance we've been long discussing, which will be a reduction in the fees, tuition amount paid by students for both summer and fall and the amount of twenty-five dollars per credit hour. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
We've got, we've got some of our new hires here on screen with us. Thank you very much for being here.
You're lucky. If you were in person, I may call you up and ask you to introduce yourself.
Welcome to the family and we look forward to meeting you in person. Any other commentary from the board? Next item.
Okay, future meeting dates, Wednesday, May nineteenth, seven P M. The Board of Trustees' Financial Stability Ad Hoc Committee Meeting Online. Details at hfcc.edu/board-meeting-schedule. Monday, June seventh, twenty twenty-one, P to twelve, Board of Education Meeting, seven P M. At the Administrative Service Center in the Frank Franchi Boardroom, following the guidelines of state law and virtually available live for viewing on the YouTube channel and as well as the Facebook page for the district and cable channel Comcast nineteen and WOW fifteen. Monday, June fourteenth, twenty twenty-one, HFC Meeting, seven P M. At the Dearborn Schools Administrative Center. And also here at the Frank Franchi Boardroom, available online at the, just at hfcc.edu/board-meeting-schedule for the Zoom conference information. Monday, June twenty-first, twenty twenty-one, P to twelve, Board of Education Meeting, seven P M. At the Administrative Service Center in the Frank Franchi Boardroom, following the guidelines of the state law and virtually available also live via the YouTube channel at the Facebook page for the district and cables as well on Comcast Channel nineteen and WOW Channel fifteen.
Two quick items before we adjourn. The next college board meeting is tentatively scheduled to be held here. There is a chance we will be back on campus. We will transmit information to everyone as we get closer to that meeting date. The other thing that we forgot to mention is we've got the, the graduation about to happen for our, our students. So congratulations to all those students who are graduating. We wish you the best going forward and please remember us in your times going forward. And with that, we will adjourn the meeting. Have a great evening, everyone.